The New Britain Board of Education. Providing students with a high-quality education.
It's time we are going to call this meeting to order. And the students from Chamberlain will lead us in their pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Natalie, please call the hall. Ms. Janey?
Here.
Mr. Gadd? Here. Ms. Louise? Mr. Mercer?
Here.
Ms. Parker?
Here.
Ms. James, where are you? Mr. Sanders?
Here.
Ms. Sanders Connolly?
Here.
Ms. Dr. Sims?
Here.
Hold our hands.
Here.
Hello, everyone. My name is J.D. Perez. I am the principal here at Chamberlain Elementary School. And I would like to welcome our honored guest, President of the Board of Education and our Board of Education members, Superintendent Sarah. And thank you for coming out tonight. I, being as we are very close to Thanksgiving, I just wanted to take a moment to share the things that I am thankful for. And one of the major things I'm thankful for are our wonderful students here at Chamberlain School. We have a special treat for them. They are going to perform our Love Wins song. We are a Love Wins school. We're the first Love Wins school, which we're very proud of. And we talk about Chamberlain cares all the time. So it fits with the Anne of Grace mission of caring and empathy and compassion. And we try to exemplify that each and every day. I also would like to take a moment to thank all our teachers for all the work that they do each and every day to help our students demonstrate how Chamberlain cares. Ms. Body is our musical director here. And in a moment, I'm going to turn this over to her. But before doing that, I would like to... I just got this email last week. And it spoke to me about our children. And it's a testament to our teachers' work and our students. And this is from Margaret Porcoitz from the New Britain Museum of Art. She's one of the docents there. And our 4th grade teachers and students went on a field trip to the museum last week. And she asked that I send this out to the 4th grade teachers. "As a docent at the New Britain Museum of American Art, I want to commend you on your terrific 4th grade students. I thoroughly enjoyed touring them through our galleries this morning in an exploration of art elements. The children were curious, engaged, respectful, and delightful. Even the two students who seemed shy and quiet perked up at Stephen Davis's abstract landscape. And they taught the piece to their classmates. It was a standout group. We learned from each other, as is the best art experience. I look forward to exploring art with your students in the future. I applaud you in whatever magic you spin to create such interesting and interested students." So I was quite touched and thankful for that. And I'm also thankful for my new assistant principal, Mr. Zalidar. And for everyone here. So we are going to begin with our musical. Ms. Body.
I can't just never say without telling you a little bit of a history about this song. Mike Kings, it's a singer and drummer who is downstairs in our building. And he came up to me one day and played this song for me that he wrote. And it just caught up through us. It just spoke to me so much. And we collaborated together. And last year, this spring, I started teaching it to all the students in the building. And so for the fine concert, each 3rd grade class plays a different song of The Recorder. And I thought this is the perfect year to sing and play my song, Love Wins song. And so Ms. Sarah invited us to the Computation. These were last year's 3rd graders. They haven't played The Recorder since Computation. They don't have music with me at all in the first trimester because we had a whole different... And some of them, I believe, have in 4th grade. So put all that together. Where's my recorder? I think it's over my bed. I'm not sure. And then, by the way, I'm going to pull you out during my plan period when you have another thing to do in your classroom. And we'll make this happen. So given all of that, I could be more proud to stand here and present this song and give it to my good friend, Mike Kings.
We know this was something tragic, but it's brought our lives to you. Now that we found this magic, we will send your message to... Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Just believe in yourself. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Help us spread the word around. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Just believe in yourself. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. We can turn the world around. Like seeds into the earth, we will watch this message grow. Like bees and a bird, we will watch it unfold. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Just believe in yourself. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Help us spread the word around. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Just believe in yourself. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. We can turn the world around. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Just believe in yourself. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Help us spread the word around. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. Just believe in yourself. Love wins. Yeah, love wins. We can turn the world around. Thank you on a great...
So thank you to our wonderful students. Nice job, everyone. Ms. Body, Mr. Kings. And thank you to the parents who brought your children out so they could have this performance. Sure, everybody. Thank you.
Nope. We're going once, we're going twice. Set up for you guys to be naughty? Oh, it was sweet. It was very sweet. Don't be bad. Yeah, it's so cute. A little side language. And I'm sorry. Is this on?
It feels so good here.
That's on.
No, it's on. It is on. Everybody.
Oh, boy.
I have to separate you.
That's so funny. So she can make sure to take one. Now if we can take a brief moment of meditation and think about all the things that we in turn are grateful for. Thank you. There's no one signed up for public participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? Anyone who would like to address the board? Is there anyone who would like to address the board for the final time? Thank you. Public participation is closed. Okay. I will do that and then I'll hand the gap over. To no two people. Anybody else? Thank you all to men in the office and the auditorium. I was going to say in the office. Christian Rosado and Willie Pabon. Thank you very much for coming out to continue to support education in New Britain. Now we will have the election of offices. The floor is now open for nominations.
So for which office first?
Presidents first.
I would like to nominate Nicole Rodriguez for president.
Second.
Any other names? Okay. So we have one nomination on the floor for Nicole Rodriguez for chairperson of the Board of Education. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Got that, Matt?
Should you congratulate her?
I guess I can congratulate myself. It's nice to be able to be collegial and a little bit comical because, you know, there have been years where it has not been so collegial. Now the nominations are open for the position of vice president.
I would like to nominate Nick Mercer to continue as vice president of the BOE. I'll second that.
Any other names on the floor? We have a nomination on the floor for Nick Mercer for the position of vice president. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Mercer.
Thank you.
And we would like to open the nominations for the position of secretary for the Board of Education.
I'd like to nominate Ms. Sanders Connolly to continue as secretary of...
That's your Christmas present.
Now, did you get that? You got that in the...
It'll be in a minute. Permanent record.
You should come to Thanksgiving. I'll record it.
Probably. That'd probably be funny. Okay. So the nomination on the floor is for Ms. Sanders Connolly to remain as secretary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, Miss Sanders Connolly. All right. Appointment of committee chairs. I now appoint you committee chair for the Finance Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you. And curriculum, Ms. Sims. And personnel, Ms. Janey.
Policy.
Policy. I have an A U too, Mr. Mercer, for policy. I mean, there it goes with the job. No one else? Does anyone else want votes?
I buy our my loss.
You're stuck. You're stuck for good. Sorry, kid. Superintendent's report.
I was taking notes.
You were taking notes?
Want to get it on right.
I think Matt's got it all right.
So we're going to stay with the theme of what we're thankful for. And so I really... And this doesn't even probably tap into all of the really nice things that are happening in our district. Not just now, but it's a good time to talk about them a little bit. And you can read through them later. But some of our highlights for Northern Elementary School and on the way in, also Chamberlain with their canned food collection. But Northern Elementary had a huge success as well. Interestingly, some of our New Britain High School students, I think it was last Thursday, went and it was under the direction of Ms. Evelyn Hudima and Ms. Sandy Ditchner. And they went. They used an ever-sores space and they bagged and prepared meals for the impoverished family in Africa. I'm going to jump down. And I didn't say this, but Smalley Elementary, there's a team of teachers from Smalley. Teresa Cuvea is one of our special education teachers at Smalley. And she started this project two years ago. And it's actually adopting a school in Kenya, Africa, where they are paying for or paying for school lunches for a year. I think it's about $6,000. So they've done fundraisers as well. Friday afternoon, I had Pastor Sean Riley in my office. And they brought over $700 in gift cards that we distributed to some of our families. I dropped them off. And our admins are going to be giving them out. You could see some other things. And we had a really good win on Friday night. I'll just put that in there because that made me really happy with our football players. And all I want to say about that is it was just lovely to see the video of them in the snow. Right?
I'm glad they did not get hurt, but yes.
It was nice. And I wanted to put in something too. We had a really nice, productive, I would say, PE day on Election Day for all of our PE teachers. Lacrosse equipment was donated to all of our schools, which is really nice. I don't know a whole lot about it. But and I'm not sure all PE teachers did either.
It says 30 lacrosse sticks and 30 trainer balls.
Yep. And they had a half PE session there. And then they also spent the afternoon. They went over to Hampton High, where they got to look at just different ways, different forms of physical health versus some of the traditional PE activities that happen. And on that same line, we're calling it rethinking recess in New Britain. And Meryl, you were a part of this in the Health and Wellness earlier in the year. But Vance is our pilot school. Teaching, helping teach our teachers about what to do at recess in terms of physical activity. Not the teachers playing with the kids, but teaching them things in front. It's instructional time for them. While it's informal, it still needs to be structured and those kinds of things. And just giving different ideas. And the nice thing about this too is it's helping with active transitions for our kids in the classroom. So it's starting at Vance. Our hope is we have a... Every PE teacher will have a license. But we're hoping to roll that out over the next couple of years. We had our second parent and community forum. Gail actually was there, which was really nice to see that you came. I'd say we had about 40 people. Around 40 people that... I think it was a really good meeting. Productive. I like productive meetings. And looking at the big issues. And a lot of it is for our families right now. After-school programming. More, needing more after-school programming. We have three students on our steering committee as well. And one of their struggles is transportation to and from the workplace. And so transportation is another issue that we're talking about. And they came up with some resolutions. We'll be meeting again as a steering committee next week to see what the agenda will be. It's held monthly, so I invite all of you to come anytime. Well, it changes. And so you'll know. We're trying to be, you know, some parents can do early, some parents can do late. It depends on schedule. So we don't have a set time. We did use Lincoln Media Center this past session. And we had childcare. Thanks to Parks and Rec, they came and provided childcare for the kiddos. And we had pizza as a dinner. So a lot of good things are going. And so for me, it's what I'm grateful for because we have a lot of hardworking people in the city and in the school district working hard for our kids.
The end.
Okay. Board reports. Yes, this comment.
I was actually able to attend the community night. It was actually very cool. I would love to see more parents out there. I don't know how you get them to come out because I know it was pretty well advertised. They did talk about the communication and how we get them out there. But I don't know. Matt, I'm sure, has some creative ways to get them out there. Friday night, yes. First clinched playoff since, what, 2014? So can't wait till Thursday. I'll be watching the games, trying to figure out who we're going to pick up on Thursday. On a little bit of a Saturday note, senior night, I know it was pouring rain. I was a little disappointed that we didn't have any administrators in attendance. I know people are busy. But that was, you know, 100 seniors between band, football, and cheerleaders. I was a little sad that only Coach Jones was there to shake their hands. And that was it. But on a happier note, there's a couple of things in the community for Thanksgiving. PAL is doing their community dinner on... Was it 11 to 2 on Thursday? I think that's it.
And then they did Turkey and 30 this weekend.
Oh, yes. The baseball team did the Turkey and 30 at Costco. Football was there too. I only saw... I was there the other day. But I thought that was pretty cool. Get them involved. Get them out there. They did good. We just received an email today too saying they raised $3,200. And... That's awesome. 300 turkeys or something like...
How many?
15,000. I was trying to get the total before I... That's awesome.
It's amazing. 2,761.
Wow, that's awesome.
I think we should do some service awards for these works.
Yes.
I think so.
Would you remind me of that?
I'm going to tell Matt. Some service awards for the efforts. Perfect. All right. Anybody else for the board report?
There were, what, five, six couples that went to the convention, McCabe. And they had some really wonderful workshops this year. And we learned a lot about cyber bullying and sexing. Some really interesting information, which I think we need to make sure the teachers are updated because they gave an instance of if you receive an inappropriate email as a teacher and if you look at the email on the computer too long or pass it on to your administrator, then you could be liable because it's illegal to do that. And so, you know, you might be looking at it. I know I would be trying to see it long enough to figure out what it was. But if it's for too long for an extended period of time, it feel like you're being creepy. So you could be held responsible. And we... I went to find all my fitness in educating the whole child, which was interesting. And then the do's and don'ts for board affairs and super for allegations of child abuse. So there's a lot of stuff that we really have to be careful of that could run and get you in trouble. So learn some new stuff.
Just to add on to that, even though it was a short session of the legislature, there were several changes that have an effect on policy that we'll have to look at putting in place, including one that I think is, hopefully, will be reconsidered or readdressed by the legislation in the upcoming long session because it is potentially very onerous in what it requires teachers to do and documentation and all of that. So that will be coming up at a policy committee meeting shortly. Having to do with the addition of a new category of seclusion, which is non... I believe, I'd have to look up the exact terminology of it, but like non-exclusionary seclusion, which is basically asking a child even to sit in a timeout in the room. And how much that needs to be documented and all of that for this new legislation. And, you know.
Wow.
Yeah. So it'll be interesting to see what that policy looks like in policy land and how we can try to implement it in a way that's not going to be overly burdensome on teachers. I also got a letter from a woman over... A woman in Bristol who wanted to just extend a very heartfelt thank you to the board for taking action at our last meeting on adopting a policy to protect transgender students. And just, this is an 83-year-old female who saw what we did and was so moved by it to write to the board and to thank us for taking a stand and supporting it. One quote is, her favorite words from the policy was talking about maximizing the student's social integration and minimizing segmentation. So I think that's something that we can stand behind. So I was glad to receive that as well.
But then, once again, the people do watch us.
Or they read the Herald.
I think only 83-year-old people read the Herald. Hey, my mom does all the time.
I was looking for the name of the workshop. So I attended the board reports of education and superintendent in increasing the racial and ethnic diversity of the Connecticut educated workforce. And we, as New Britain, were given a shout-out during this presentation for our work with Relay. Also, our work with Educators Rising. And they are looking to do educators rising in other communities. And they're hoping that if they can get 10 other cities or nine other cities to do it, that there will be at least 750 educators-rising students so that we can continue to grow our own. And so they were really giving us a lot of accolades about the work that we've been doing with recruitment. It was enlightening because they were... At first, the idea was that there just weren't any educators of color out there and that the pool was too shallow. And at second glance, when they started to really start to data dive and look around in the state, there are. It was bigger. The pool was bigger than they thought. Now the idea is how do we get them? And, you know, in what areas are they certified? So that was excellent. And I went to another one on courageous conversations. And Superintendent Sarah and I and Ms. Sims have been talking about how to start courageous conversations. And I do believe one of the members of CAPE, one of the board members, they have a group that will help and facilitate those conversations in the communities. So I'm thinking we can welcome them in and start those conversations in the community about equity and excellence in all shapes and forms and how we can talk about that and further that mission in our schools. CAPE was amazing. All right. So old business.
I think it was the Saturday before last, they dedicated the little driveway in Pulaski down McNamara Way. So I know some of us were there. I don't remember who exactly. So you can shout yourself out to watch them dedicate that driveway to John McNamara. And it was chilly, but it was a nice ceremony. And he's a riot. He was actually pretty funny. Sorry, Bill McNamara. Yes. I'm mixing up my...
McNamara's.
Yeah. So that was very good. And for myself, I attended the CALAS conference, which I saw people like Mr. Saldivar there. And that was very good. And also had some workshops on courageous conversations and providing socio-emotional learning through a lens of equity, which was a very good workshop, and some others there. There was... Joanna Robles is not here right now, but there was a workshop we attended together on Latinos in Action, which is a group that can be started anywhere. There are a lot in Arizona, I think. which is a group that can be started anywhere. There, there are a lot in Arizona, I think. And there are a few states that have a lot of them. And Connecticut now has two, one in Hartford and one somewhere else. And I know it was something that Joanna was very interested in, said she would be bringing to Nancy, Sarah, and that, you know, I could help explain when we look at that as well. And it starts at the high school level and it makes students basically become mentors to little ones and sort of be leaders in their own communities. So that was a cool one.
And then I have one other. My, my children attend Dela Retto and they were raving about the STEAM night on Friday and were in tears when they thought they were leaving. They thought they were, my husband came to pick them up and they were like, no, 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 it's STEAM night. You have to stay. And I got, they were sending me pictures while I was at CAPE and it looked amazing. And the kids had a blast. And it was nice because they were telling me if their teachers stayed and they were all there and they were very.
There's lots of learning going on.
Yes, there was lots of learning. They were very excited though.
There's standards that go with it, so.
Yes, but just to see the excitement around learning, especially when we're trying to make sure that, especially young boys are engaged in learning, to me, it's, it's great to see them so excited. So.
The teachers.
Yes.
For sure.
You, not you, but yes, it's great to see them. So I am happy.
I have a question. Are we at some point going to get like a mid-year of how things are going?
Yes. Yeah. And actually, Kiva will be sending out an invite to everyone. We're going to be doing our board and admin dinner. I can't remember the date right now. She's sending out the invitation. And we're actually going to have some STEAM activities for the adults too.
December seventeenth.
Oh, she sent it out?
Matt's just.
Thank you, Matt.
Whispering in my ear. He's, you know.
So, but yes. And I, I met with all the STEAM teachers last week again. It's my second time meeting with them. I meet with them monthly to hear what's working, what's not working, what do we need to fix. I also met with all of my building leaders and APs. I think it was last week or the week before, just again, to hear how are things going just at the building level and those things, what are the challenges that you're seeing? And some of the things we adjust in real time, some things have to wait and, you know, yeah. And so I actually have all the minutes that I can share with you too from just, just to say what, what the strengths are. I think that some of the initial areas of concern, especially for our middle school folks, is seeing them every nine days and that's been a real problem. However, talking to them this past week, they're like, we like it this way now. Some do, some don't, right? And again, we won't get a hundred percent, but you've got to kind of look for two-thirds majority and that's what we have to go with. And again, I met with them three weeks after it started, four weeks, just to get initial again, four weeks later. And I'll meet with them on a monthly basis. And again, it, for me, the enrichment is a non-negotiable. And New Britain University time is a non-negotiable. What we do in it, we have to fix it. And it's listening to folks. And I will always listen and make the adjustments. But for me, enrichment for kids, for every kid is important. And new learning for adults is really important too. So those are two big ones that we, we won't bend on, but we'll bend on how we do it, maybe the schedule and such. But I will.
It was nice to also see that the teachers have the opportunity to try and fail, if that makes sense, with administrator to come and see what they're doing and try out the new things from NBU without penalties. So it's a nonevalutive observation. They can say, hey, I'm trying this thing we learned in NBU, come check it out. And they can look at it without it being part of their evaluation and then get some feedback in real time. So to me, I think that that's, hopefully that that is.
Lowest of the temperature.
Right. And it's really successful, really successful for them.
Right.
And we are now going to have a pupil, per pupil expenditure presentation by Mr. Kevin Kane. It's in our folders. He, their, screen is for them. It looks like.
So we can't see it?
No, we cannot. There was no way for us to see it and them to see it. We tried to figure that out.
Is your presentation in color? Yeah, you have it in color?
It is not.
Okay. I have actually, actually copied it in color.
Thank you, sir.
You need to speak loud.
Hey, this is really more of an annual, we have an annual basis. We always talk about per pupil expenditures and how New Britain appears with the rest of the state. The numbers actually just came out recently. So every, every September first, all school districts have to file their annual report of the state of Connecticut. This is really a preliminary annual report. So what happens is the, the auditors come in in September and October and they go through the, they go through the audit. And for the most part, there's no corrections. So for the most part, the numbers are probably going to hold true. What I'm doing here is giving you really a five-year snapshot. This slide right here has 2013, 14. And that's really, I'm calling this a prior, prior administration, prior city administration. And when you think about our funding, our, our funding comes from the city and also comes from the state. So it is really a combination. But the prior city administration back in thirteen fourteen, our per pupil expenditure was 12,00918. There's 169 school districts in the state. Where are 161? In fourteen fifteen, 13,033. So we moved up, but we also dropped. So it went from 161 to 162. So we actually get closer to the bottom. In fifteen sixteen, 13,196, we're 167th in the state. We had an increase again. In sixteen seventeen, 13,391, we were 167th in the state. Remember, it's only 169 communities. And I was joking when we had that presentation back in self-insurance fund, and I said, Nancy, Sarah, I have a film and we want 68. I had no idea. We are 168. We've actually dropped. Our per pupil expenditure in seventeen eighteen is 13,059. We're 168th in the state. If you look at a comparison just written in relevancy, you're looking at thirteen fourteen, which is five years early. So let's think, let's think about the cost of living adjustment. So usually cost of living adjustment might be one, two percent. So that 12,0918, in our case, only grew 141 dollars. So we're not really keeping up. We're falling behind. Now, the next chart is the DIRG I comparison. In Connecticut, you have the wealthiest DIRGs are A, B, C, D. It goes all the way to DIRG I. DIRG I is the seventh poorest school district. And we're in that group. And when you look at this table right here, you're going to see Hartford, Wyndham, New Haven, New London, Waterbury, and Bridgeport. For the most part, for every year, for the last four years, that is really a ranking of per pupil expenditures. If you went back to prior city administration in thirteen fourteen, Wyndham, New Haven sort of swapped out. But for the most part, we've always been seven out of seven. We have been seven out of seven. So when you look at this thing right here, you look, I'm just going to compare thirteen and fourteen versus seventeen and eighteen. In thirteen and fourteen, the DIRG average was 15,774. In seventeen eighteen, 16,416. When we do the math and based on 10,000 students, in thirteen fourteen, we're 28.6 million dollars away from the average for the DIRG I. Today, we're 33.6 million dollars away from the DIRG average. We look at the state average. In thirteen fourteen, the state average was 15,180. Back then, we were 22.6 million dollars away from the average. Now the state average is 16,967. So our funding shortfall is now 39.1 million dollars when it was 22.26. The next page.
Yes. Just for clarification, in calculating this number, this is state funding, local funding. Does this also include federal grant funding?
Yes, it does.
So it's our full budget, every grant, everything rolled up into one, no additional funds are left out, things like that?
No.
Thank you.
Now, the greatest school district.
I have a question. Just going back to the first page, the gross per pupil expenditure?
Yes.
Is that because we receive less money or we have more kids or?
It's a combination.
Combination.
You know, I would have to go back to the, the annual report. Each year, we do a filing. You know, for instance, the state always takes our student enrollment. They also take our student enrollment that's not in New Britain. They count that. So when we send kids to the magnet schools, that counts against us. And there's kids that might be in the parochial school, which you're, you know, one, we have parochial schools, you're doing transportation. Those students are counted to an extent. So the state actually does a, a weighted average. They, they know how many students are in New Britain. They know how many students really live in New Britain. They may be being educated somewhere else and that. Those numbers kind of get dealt together. So, so what happens usually, your, your numerator increases, decreases. So if we actually receive additional money, your numerator may go up a little. But at the same time, sometimes your denominator goes up too. So a good example is Danbury. And you're going to see Danbury later on. Danbury actually is getting some increases from their, from their city. It may be a million dollars. But Danbury's enrollment over the last several years has increased much higher than other communities. So, you know, they're receiving additional funding, but at the same time, their denominator is going up. So that's what's, what's the damage to Danbury. So back in 1999, 2000, this was the first year I was able to get the, these numbers off the state. And this is just a running numbers. I have each one of these reports. If anybody on the board wants the, a PDF copy from 99, 2000 to the present, I can, I can send that to you. But for example, 99, 2000, we're 67th. Now, when I look at this, in 2001, 2002, those, that's when I would say that's the heyday. We were 47th in the state. And then we went to 60, 68, 78, 96, 114. We had a good year, went to 100. Then went to 120, 128, 126, 164. At the end of Mayor O'Brien's last year, that's really the base year, we were 161. So in 14, 15, 162, 15, 16, 167, 167, 168. Now, what I did here, I really give you a comparison. I look at us compared to Danbury. Why am I picking Danbury? Because Danbury's been at the bottom for the last three years. So you're going to see Danbury, right below New Britain, and you're going to see per pupil expenditure. You're going to see rank. In 13, 14, Danbury 163. In Britain was 161. You're going to see a delta difference. What I mean by a delta difference is a variance. Our per pupil expenditure in 13, 14 was 12,918. Danbury was 12,683. So we're at 235 dollars higher. In sixty, in the following year, 14, 15, the differential was 305. Now, for the last three years, Danbury's been 169. In 15, 16, we were 13,196. Danbury was 12,794. We're 402 dollars higher than Danbury. 16, 17, we were 13,391. Danbury was 12,742 or 649. Today, or at least as of last year, we're at 13,0159. Danbury is 12,989. We're 160 dollars. So we really have narrowed the, the reach. I think we all remember like five, five years ago, six years ago, this city of New Britain gave us 4.4 million dollars and that would become a controversial number out there, funding. There was some action trying to reduce that number. Well, I always said jokingly to the board, if we didn't have that 4.4 million dollars, we'd be last in the state. And we probably would have been last in the state in 15, 16, 14, 15, 14, 15. In 16, 17, we, you know, we had a good year, but we definitely would be last in the state in 17, 18. Any questions?
My question is, where's the deficiency coming from? Is it coming from the city side? Is it coming from the state side?
It's really a combination of both.
Combination.
Yeah.
Is there a percentage you control on that? Is it?
No, I think we looked at a couple of years ago. I, I think the only community, like, let's use Bridgeport as an example. You know, when it comes to funding, it's, it's very close as to who receives less funding from the municipality in New Britain or Bridgeport. People have argued that Bridgeport receives less from the city. But this may be a change right now. So it, we're, you know, if we're not seventh in receiving funding from our city, we're definitely sixth. And we might be, we might be seventh. So there's not much of a difference between Bridgeport and New Britain in funding.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kane. Thank you for putting the presentation together and doing the research. Yes. There continues to be work to do.
Motion to, on item 4B, motion to approve policy changes to policy 1110.10, parent family involvement.
Second.
I don't know if anyone on the board had any questions or recommendations for revision.
At least second look for.
This is, yeah, this is second read.
Any discussion, any other things they wanted to bring up? Okay. All those in favor of approving the proposed changes to the policy 1110.10, parent and family involvement? Say goodbye by saying aye.
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 Close the post.
Motion to approve policy changes to policy 3280, gifts, grants, and requests.
Second.
Discussion?
Just to reiterate, this is just adding sort of the language around crowdfunding because that's speaking of funding ever becoming a source that we try to do some good for families and take, take donations for some of our families in need at times. So it does add some guidelines and we have an additional policy which we'll be looking at.
Next.
Next, which lines out more specifically how to use crowdfunding within the district.
All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the post. For crowdfunding.
Yeah. Motion to approve new policy 3281, crowdfunding.
Second.
All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the post. Welcome anyone to raise money as long as they do what they want. Yeah, I know. Just looking to see if there was any donations. All right. Consent agenda, please. Look it over. It's so lengthy. Yes, yes, they are. And with, the attendance one is still being worked on, so. Moving on. Operations, certified furniture fixtures. Can I have a motion for?
Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, this is to certified furniture fixtures and equipment and technology for Smalley Elementary School. Any questions or comments?
This is just standard.
Oh, this is part of.
Everything we buy for the school has to come through for us to prove that we've, I'm saying yes, they can. Record.
And Mr. Morrison and Nancy. The standard.
Oh, there's, of course, there is.
Yeah, you couldn't see it.
Required processes that next weekend, 27, we're going to the state office of school construction and grants for review for furniture fixtures, equipment, and technology. What is required before we go up there is that the board of education and the school building committee approve the inventory that we'll be purchasing for Smalley School. We've met with the administrative, Dale has met with the administrative staff at Smalley School, all of the specialty teachers. We established a standard for furniture in all of the classrooms, instructional classrooms and resource classrooms. We've incorporated that, every piece of furniture in every classroom, and then we do an inventory of every piece of equipment and present that to the state. We're at 651,000 for furniture. We have an $800,000 budget, so we're under budget for furniture. We have an $8,000, an $800,000 budget for. We have an $800,000 budget for technology.
Mr. Moore, if you know the number off the top of your head, I'm not sure. Just how many students do Smalley now? How's versus how many students it did?
Yeah, no, I don't have that figure in front of me. We're in the 700s. And Smalley's enrollment has just about stayed the same over the last eight years. So there's no significant change in Smalley's enrollment in the past eight years.
So the capability of housing?
Capability? The state will no longer allow us to build a school beyond, we can't read district. We have to hire a person that does a certified enrollment projection based on the birth rate in the district. Smalley School is being built to that projection.
All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the post. Power School is the portal in which we get our information about our babies. We track lots of information there. And it is very, it's a very useful tool that most districts have.
I was about to say, I don't think I have worked or know anyone who currently works in a district that is not using Power School. Just for information, the cost of it to our district is just under $60,000. But it is software, like we said, we use it to house all of our student data, all of our student grades.
Behavior, attendance. It has the capacity to log every instance of point of contact, attendance, grades for every student.
That's kind of the background, the backbone of the.
Yes. I think it's Mr. Program's happiness. All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the post.
Motion to approve first order for Power School registration portal?
Second. This is new, correct?
The registration piece?
Mr. Program.
No.
No, it's just the other.
It's renewal? Oh, I don't have my glasses on, sorry.
It says increase the license count and incorporate community preschool students as well.
Right, which is something we've been talking about for a while. To be able to track the preschool, preschool babies.
And those would be at the community programs as well. The school ready funded community programs as well.
He's over there.
Can you two hear us?
No. The question was the additional licenses for the community preschools. Are those for the other school readiness preschools like Hawaii?
Correct. That is, you know, we've been going on a smaller portal for Power School, community wise. And now we got to the point, working with Megan, to decide to bring them into the singular unit. So that's why there's an increase of the licenses for the 500. And the registration has, the Power School registration portal number has to match the Power School number. So that regardless of if they use Power School registration at that level, we still have to pay for that one.
And the benefit of having Power School for our community providers as well is?
Well, of course, when it gets down to the then registration back in, they'll start with Power School numbers here. We have a process right now where we have to take them off of that server, give them their new numbers that then last them throughout their existence here within the public school system. So really, it's just bringing into a fold all those parts of the process which should then keep the streamlining element of registering into our kindergarten moving forward as we've seen a change over the course of the year.
And also for the transitioning, right? Community, because they're our kiddos, they're gonna be our kiddos anyway. And it's a method of communication.
All those in favor, say goodbye by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the post. I should motion to approve the 2019 Board of Education meeting.
Second, or motion second.
Motion.
Motion.
So discussion, page 31.
I have, the committee meetings. I know we had had some brief conversation about stacking them together. And I understand the pros to that. My concern is, is there enough time? My concern is that.
We have a proposal for you that doesn't do any of that. Because we knew that it was gonna be, we were thinking that it wasn't gonna be enough time.
Right, okay.
So we were thinking that perhaps in lieu of the second Board of Ed meeting, so we'd have one, then the, we'd have a committee meeting on one Monday, two committee meetings, and then two more subcommittee meetings on another Monday. So we'd meet three Mondays of the month, but there'd be two committee on one and two committee on the other. So that the committees would discuss. And then the one, the one public meeting, we would do the business part of it. So that's one, one option.
So one board, one actual Board of Ed meeting every month?
Mm-hmm.
And the other two are committee meetings, so.
So you would be, if you were on the committee, you would go to the meeting. If you weren't on the committee, you wouldn't go to those meetings. And that would hopefully alleviate some of the.
That full week.
Yeah, that week, yes. That week itself. And for the committees to do the work. And then they would be the ones bringing the information to.
To the one main meeting.
To the one main meeting. As a committee, you recommend it to the board. You're trusting that you've done the work and that if you're bringing it for approval.
Is one, is one full fledged Board of Ed meeting a month enough to do business?
We would be a little bit longer, I think.
So just slightly tangentially, we can do this. It is permissible under state law. I want to double check the city charter, but I believe the charter doesn't prescribe.
It doesn't prescribe the amount, right.
And our bylaws say we must hold at least one regular meeting per month. Technically, state law says we have to hold, I think, two a year, so.
Yeah.
So as far as getting the business, as far as getting the business done, I think we definitely would be looking to really shift some of the work to the committees.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just asking, I'm really playing devil's advocate. I think it could be done if you have an agenda, you stick to that agenda, and you move it along, and don't get caught up on tangential things and a lot of, you know, non-related discussion. I think the business could be done. I'm just saying it out loud, just so that it's in your head. That is fine by me.
Any other thoughts?
And if it works for everybody, it seems like it's kind of a compromise between Board of Ed members and admins who are required to be at various meetings.
The cabinet seems to be smiling without smiling. They heard it, they were like, we're not gonna get excited until they make, until they vote. We're not gonna say.
The only other question I have or potential concern is as far as timing of our subcommittee meetings, then? If we're shifting the work to there, instead of blocking 45, 90 minutes per, I'd say blocking 90 minutes for the subcommittee meetings on our schedule with the understanding that if one is running long.
So it'd start, we're still looking to start at 5:30?
It'd be 5:30 to 6, yeah, 5:30 to 7.
And 7:30.
7:30.
That would be the block. And that way you could get it done. And if it is over, it's over. But you have the time and you're not like forced.
And we do have the option of if we find we're getting everything done very quickly, we can always amend our full calendar.
And this would start in Jan, January?
January.
Right, this one, correct. We don't meet during the Christmas holiday week anyway, so.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Will we, because right now we meet once at the admin building and once in a school.
Yes.
So how would that?
So I was talking with Mr. Kanata about this. And we were thinking that it would take us two years to get through all the schools because we would probably do schools every other versus doing schools every month. So we would meet at the board every other month and the schools every other month, not doing September or June. June is really tricky with moving things around. And September, they're just getting into their buildings, or August, that September area there. But we would still.
But we would continue.
We would continue the rotation. It just wouldn't be as frequent. And then the finance or the state of the budget that Kevin loves to give would be at the high school so that the technology is there and the seating is there.
Because so many people.
They love to go to that one, right?
And we go back into Smalley, September?
Yes, we go back into Smalley into September, in September, Lord Wolling, right?
August.
2019.
2019, so, school year 2019, 20. 1920, so yeah, September.
We managed to have one more meeting next week.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yes. Mr. Kanata, you heard that request?
Smalley, early.
October 2019, at Smalley, that's good.
And if we're not making our way through all the schools in the one year or whatever, if we, and this is probably already done, but if we strategically sort of plan them so we're on certain sides of towns because some schools are near each other.
Right, yes, yes.
The school might be near elementary and even the.
Don't do Vans Lincoln or the same here.
Right, exactly, don't do all those because they're all in the same community. Just bounce them around so we're at the different parts of town. And it's convenient for all that community.
When we originally started doing that, we started by going to the elementary schools and not doing the middle school or high school because we figured that way we'd get around town more. But.
So if we're gonna do that, are we gonna do our meetings on the first or the third Monday?
Good question. Preference, anyone?
I would say.
I would think.
First.
The first, because then you have your two committee meetings. And then the following, you'll have, the work will have been done.
Meeting committees, meeting committees.
Yeah. Does that work?
Works, I know I won't do it in January.
The January one, what is the date of the January one? The 7th, okay. Okay. Yes, sir.
Just one other question because we sort of, when we did this first, we sort of arbitrarily put our committee meetings all at the last week of the month. Curious the board's thoughts as to going the first, because we have the Monday, then a break, then Monday, two Mondays back to back, so to speak. Would people prefer to do one Monday, two Monday, three Monday, all in a row? Have that last Monday off for the, of the last Monday of the month?
The fourth Monday.
And that would give the clerk time to prepare materials and compile for our agenda?
That's fine. That works. And then when we have five Mondays a week, we get focused.
Yes.
I'm like a pageant.
I know, I like five quarters.
You getting all this time?
Yep. I just have one more question.
Sure.
For the second and third Monday, which committee is gonna be, I wish one.
Okay, so, what did we say? We did say this.
I think we had policy, policy and curriculum on one and finance and personnel on the other.
Wait, wait, whoa, what was that? Finance and personnel on.
Finance and personnel together and curriculum and policy together. Does that mean that you're there every week?
That means I'm there every, whatever.
Is there anyone else that that affects to a place like that? So do you want to flip it?
Switch it, it's okay, you can do it, doesn't matter to me.
Well, for me, I'm on curriculum and policy.
Oh.
I think either way, either way.
I can always drop off a policy.
You could.
You could. And then you could just go and do it.
Well, and realistically, it's also the same amount of time because you're either there for three hours.
Or hour and a half and an hour and a half.
Exactly.
So what, what we can do is we will, if the schedule isn't meaningful, we can look at the committees we sit on and make sure we finalize that and over the next week. And if that, if that makes sense, then if it works for you, there's something you're really attaching on, you weren't on it before, and you want to go on it. And I know we have two missing members, so we want to make sure that they also, at least they know of the changes because they want.
So we're voting on, is that amended?
Right, so what it would, if I got this right, we, it would read that the, actually, Matt.
So we would.
You have it all written down, yes? So it would be the first three?
Be the first three Mondays.
Of every month.
First meeting, first Monday, then four meeting. Second, personnel, finance. Third, curriculum and policy.
Motion.
Starting at 5:30 to 7:00, 7:00 to 8:00. Four meetings start at six.
Curriculum and policy.
So what is finance? It goes finance and then personnel, personnel.
Personnel and then finance, the same as this.
So one of those can we swap?
I'm all right with those.
Right. Just because.
Did you love the timing?
Right, if I'm gonna be there for every single meeting, at least one, I would like to have it early.
Oh, 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 so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Gotcha, so it's finance.
Either one.
The order.
Yeah.
Yeah, the timing.
So do you want to, do you, oh, I got you.
We'll do policy before curriculum, and that way, perfect.
Well, that way we have to be out there, not one.
Hour and a half, he gets an hour and a half. All right, so the, so the third Monday would be policy, curriculum, instead of curriculum, policy. All right.
And just for the dates.
For January, I guess.
For Jan, well, for January, it would be January 7th, 13th, and 20th.
21st, mm-hmm. Wait a minute, I'm okay now?
That's why I'm double checking.
I feel like I have, I'm.
Sorry, 22nd, so 7, 7, 14th, and 22nd. For February, it would be February 4th, 11th, and Tuesday, the 19th.
Oh, because of all the Monday holidays.
Yep. For March, it would be March 4th, 11th, and 18th. It'd be April Fool's Day, April 15th, and April 22nd. Oh, sorry, April Fool's Day is April 8th and April 15th.
Oh, wait. When's vacation?
Oh, it's vacation, vacation is the fif.
The third week.
Sorry, so 22nd. So it'd be the 22nd that month. Then it would be Monday, May 6th, the 13th, and the 20th. And then in June, June 3rd. And if we have extra, well, if we need to hold extra meetings in June, the 10th and the 17th. And then July, we have, per our bylaws, we have to have one meeting. So I'd say July.
The first.
First.
Well, is it the first?
The first is the first, though.
Oh.
Since like the week of.
Let's do the.
Yeah, let's do July 8th.
Since we get to pick it anyway.
Yep.
8th sounds fabulous.
And then we.
8th.
What we currently have proposed on the calendar is August 19th as our comeback date. I'm curious if that is.
When's complication?
If we do it the same as we did it last year, what day will be? If we do it on that Wednesday, we bring the teachers back Monday to Tuesday and then have a complication on the Wednesday.
When are your admins back? Because I think we need it till the admins are back.
What's the first day of school? Our admins are back two weeks before the first day of school.
So that would have been, that would be the 19th.
Before the kids come back.
Last year, we had a version of August 12th, which was too early, so we switched it to.
The following week.
This past year, so that's why I had it on August 19th.
Okay.
To do it as that Monday closes, everyone coming back.
So why don't we put it as August 19th for now? And if we need to adjust it, we can.
We can adjust it.
Okay.
What were the, what were the April dates again?
April is the first, the 8th, and the 22nd.
So then September would be 3rd, the 9th, and the 16th. October. For some reason, we don't have October.
It's the 8th, the 21st right now, so 8th, 15th, and the 21st.
8th, 14th.
14th.
And 21st.
Right.
Oh, so 15th, yep. Sir. Oh, because of Monday. Never mind.
I'm like, what?
The 8th was confusing me, sorry.
Nope.
And then November would be the 4th, the 11th, and the 18th.
The 11th.
Is 11th is, yeah, so 12. For 12. Is, eleventh is, yeah, so twelve, four, uh, four, twelve, eighteen. And then December second. And then if we're masochist, December ninth and December sixteen. We can always cancel meetings.
And if anyone's wondering why we're doing the calendar now, it has to be submitted to the clerk by December first, because if not, any meeting in January that's held has to be a special meeting, so that's why we are doing it in November.
And we technically have to fire a file with the Secretary of State as well.
Right, and since he's, no babies right now, we don't get too much trouble for special meetings. Hey, you know, there is, there is, it's been into existence, just saying, all right.
So a motion to cancel next week's Tuesday?
You want to make a motion to cancel next week Tuesday?
Tuesdays, committee meetings, that's playoffs, maybe.
That's, that's the discretion.
We have to vote on this first.
Yes, right, right, that is discretion of the chair, yes, and let's vote on the calendar as amended with all dates and times.
I wanted you to repeat that.
You want me to repeat that? All votes in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Do we get through all that? Please do not vote, all right. And we are not doing E, so F. F, and then moving back to. That is not, we are not doing that today. They are upset we are doing this. So motion to go into a special.
We're not doing E?
We are not doing E, but we are going into executive session to discuss six F and four A.
So I have motion to go into executive session regarding update on pending legal matter and discussion of the superintendent's contract. And I would ask Ms. Sarah, Mr. Kane to join us.
Do you need Janice?
Do you need Janice?
No.
Okay, perfect. And those would be the last two items that we're going to, that we would be coming back for.
We might back them.
We, yes, there will be an action. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I'm sure we have enough people. Come down. All right, we are now back in session.
I'd like to make a motion to approve extension, well, it's going to be an extension of the superintendent's contract by one year, as discussed in executive session. The pertinent elements is the addition of an annuity or changing the annuity to be a four percent annuity in the second year of the contract, and a six percent in the final year.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to.
Oh, wait, motion to adjourn.
All right.
Oh, the dueling Sanders.
That's my job.
Yeah.